Call a meeting to order. Number one is to designate alternate members if needed. You gladly fill in?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. So I get three, four. Okay. Before we even get to item number two, have an announcement. You must wear a mask at all times. If you remove your mask, you will be asked to leave. Very self-implantatory. All right, item number two, review minutes of December 14th, 2020.
I move we accept the minutes of December 14th as written.
I have a motion. Mike seconds it. Any discussion? There not being any, a call for the vote. All those in favor, unanimous. Okay. Going to join us, Mike?
Yes.
Did you bring your nameplate with you?
No.
Item number three on the agenda. Alfred Harvey, 114 Perrym Street, 30 percent expansion for construction of a porch. Who do we have here representing? Please state your name for the record.
John Sales.
Before you get set, I'll make a motion. We accept the application as presented. Ah, no, I'm sorry, that's wrong. Application is complete.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor, unanimous. Okay, now you can go. Now we need for you to explain to us what you're going to do and to the audience.
It's going to be a seventeen by seven and a half foot porch that they're putting on. Did he, I was told that he already submitted the blueprint to him.
Right. Is this the house? I think I rode by the right house. This is the gray house on the left?
Yeah, because it had its own clear water.
Yep.
Yep.
A second, Mike. Alternate way down. We'll start with you if you have any questions.
What's the actual, how far south is the street?
The actual distance will be, I believe, over eight feet. I don't have the specific measurement on here. It was passed by the guidelines of the public works and they said it wasn't too close to the blueprints that we had.
Clayton, I can give you a little extra detail?
Okay.
It would be exactly nine feet from this deck that was described, which is going to be seventeen times seven and a half feet for a total of one hundred and twenty-seven and a half feet. But that, the steps are going to come toward the sidewalk, two feet, and there's another seven feet of sidewalk, side, private sidewalk. So for a total of nine feet from the actual deck to the back of the sidewalk, if that helps.
Judith, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Wright?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. McGraw?
Fine.
And Mike?
Are there any setback issues?
And that's what this specifically addresses, is that both Phil Hutchins okayed his private sidewalk within the right-of-way that's behind our sidewalk. And then our review is for non-conformance expansion, which comes up to the back of the right-of-way, right on the property line. That's where the entrance deck is going to go.
So we're basically approving a non-conformance?
Yeah, non-conformance expansion. There's currently four hundred and thirty-two square feet of non-conformance in the house, which you can expand by 30 percent with approval by the board. So if you multiply seventeen times seven and a half, you get one hundred and twenty-seven and a half square feet, which is just a hair under the one hundred and twenty-eight square feet he could do, which is 30 percent of the total, four thirty-two.
I guess my question, I drove by this the other day too, and it does seem that all the houses right along there, there's nothing any closer to the road. And he puts on a little porch or something, isn't everybody else going to say, well, can I put one on too?
That may happen. I think everybody's entitled to an entrance to their house, you know, a good landing and steps, but I, we'll see. I think they could be candidates as well, but we have that 30 percent expansion rule, so, yeah, and this, we notify the abudders, so.
Oh, something, Mike? Mr. Smith?
I'm fine.
One second.
My question's been answered.
Do we have any abudders to that property or anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment? Seeing no response, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, so signify, unanimous.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't think we had to do that. Yeah, because we needed a motion to deem it complete and then have your discussion now.
Okay.
Everything's full, so you've got to do a motion.
We're going to back up. We need to do a motion to approve it. I thought, the way we'd been doing it, that once we approved, the application is complete.
Dash is saying that it's complete enough for you guys to review it.
Okay.
Right, to review it.
I'll make a motion that we accept it. All right, now I'm calling. All those in favor? Procedural error. Okay. So next up is item number four, life enrichment advancing people, LEAP, 164 Livermore Falls Road, wanting to remodel and rebuild in the Fireman Forest, a 2,480 square foot building and convert existing building into office. Who do we have? I see him walking in now, just in time, Mr. Wood.
Oh, I went to the town hall.
You're up.
Come on, Gary.
Yep. First of all, I'll make the motion that we accept the application as complete.
I'll second it.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor, so signify, unanimous. Okay. Now you got to do your.
Yeah. Okay, so we're, first off, normally I would have the folks from Mainland Development here to present this for us, but to try to keep it to as few a people as possible, I decided to come and do the presentation myself.
We appreciate it.
But they did say, Bob said I could give them a call or they'd be willing to come back to the next meeting if there were any unanswered questions here today. So we purchased Three Rivers Orthopedics on the Livermore Falls Road, Route 133, and we also purchased an adjacent lot, which is to the right of the building, kind of adjacent to Wilson Stream and across Sandy River Nursing Home and the hospital. Our plans are to build a training facility there. We have almost 200 employees and we're required to do a lot of training for our staff, both existing staff and new staff. So we hired Meldrum Consulting, an architectural firm out of Kingfield, Maine, and Mainland Consultants out of Livermore.
Daryl?
Yes.
We need to use the microphone, please.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Can you hear me? Go ahead and speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we've hired Mainland Consultants, Bob Berry's group, to do all the site work and planning for us, site design, I wish, should say, and Meldrum Design out of Kingfield to do the architectural work for our new training project. It is about 2,500 square feet. We're trying to do as green a project as possible, really also considering any of the, you know, stormwater considerations and runoff. We are going to have a solar aspect to this. It's going to be hyper-insulated, and we're going to be looking for efficiency main types of setbacks for that and everything. So what we hope to do is get this thing going in the spring, as soon as the snow is gone and things have dried up enough. We're going to have a driveway in, not off 133 as we had originally planned, but we're going to go down into the doctor's office building, and the driveway's going to go across from down there, about 250 feet to our location, which will not be visible from 133 because of the wooded nature of the area. We're also, it's basically going to be really one big room with just a couple of offices and some storage space and some parking. A lot of the folks that will be accessing that location do have some level of disability, so we'll have, everything will be accessible in that regard. We're also planning to do a little gravel walkway down to the stream and open up a little area where people can go down and sit or recreate, and that will be open to the public as well.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
So we, you know, I don't know how much in-depth you need to have here. I know that Steve has approved the general site review. We have permit applications in for stormwater.
Right.
You know, shoreland zoning, site planning, and you guys all have copies of the plan. Yeah, I thought, yep.
Yes, we do.
I did bring some bigger plans if anybody wanted to open those up and see. And I'm available for any questions that anybody has.
Well, let's start with Judith today, tonight.
Well, looking over your plans, they look really good.
Okay.
And I think the, what you do there is awesome. Somewhere I read that where there's going to be construction taking place about the same time that you're going to be constructing your project, will that impact on anything you're doing or?
What other construction are you?
Well, I think, I think that Dick Davis mentioned that they were going to be doing work on the bridge.
Oh.
About the same timeline, and I wondered if that's something you needed to consider.
No, I hadn't considered that at all, but I think there's a couple of different ways to access that site by coming in from off Route Four and coming around, so it's not much of a detour as far as like getting equipment and people in there that way.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't think it will impact us.
Jeff?
Hi, Daryl. Jeff Wright.
Hi, Doug.
Very impressed with your plan, clean and neat. The, I was happy to see that you're still going to use, you know, the existing building, and is that primarily going to be offices for you?
Yes, yep. The existing building is going to be for our back-office functions, accounting, human resources, directors, et cetera. And then the new building is going to be primarily for staff education and training, you know, mandated requirements for us. Not quite enough space over, you know, we need a good space to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McGraw?
Again, like they said, very impressive book and wonderful presentation of everything. I noticed in here that it talks about the archaeological studies that need to be done, but I don't see those. Have those been done yet or?
Well, you know, I think what's required is to send the letter to the state identifying where our project is and what we're doing, and that letter sent by Mainland is in the plans.
Right.
And as of last Thursday, they had not received a letter back. I think the note in the plan itself says as soon as they get that, it'll come over here to update the record, so. And I don't know how that works. I don't know if they always reply or if they don't reply, at a certain point it just becomes okay, but, does anybody, I don't know.
Usually you'll hear quickly if it's in a sensitive, they don't like to disclose these sites. You'll hear quickly if it is near or next to a sensitive site. So the fact that you haven't heard quickly means essentially they just, they're going to get the letter out saying that the project's okay. I think any approval here would be the same as with DEP approvals, it's contingent upon, you know, an okay from MHPC.
Yep.
In historical preservation.
Because weren't there some questions over on Wilson Stream years ago on the property where Woodland is now and stuff? Weren't there some archaeological sites or?
Further, further this way, yeah, further north, let's say on the McCleary property, there were some questions, and what was the other property you mentioned?
I don't know, I thought oh, by Woodlands.
They did an examination there as well.
So we don't?
But they gave it a clean bill of health.
Okay, so we don't foresee any problems, we're just waiting for the letter?
No, no. In fact, we know generally where the sensitive areas are in town, after doing our comprehensive plan, let's say, but this is not near those. And we did know previously about the McCleary property from 20 years ago, but there are about half a dozen sensitive sites in town.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hartley?
This, well, looks really good. A quick question on the, I noticed there's a line delineating on here about being setback from a vernal pool. Is this an issue for this building as right, it's in the middle of the vernal pool section?
Well, my understanding, were you asking me or Steve?
Oh, either one.
Okay, so I'll give you what I know and then you can fill in. There was a site that was identified, it's kind of like a depression down towards the stream.
Yeah.
And the engineers, surveyors, said, you know, we can't tell at this time of year whether in the spring this could be designated a vernal pool. So we're going to err on the side of caution and designate it as if it would be and then create that 250-foot setback around it. So that would be, I still think that we can proceed with our plan, even if it is determined that that is a vernal pool down there, but there's a couple of adoptions we'd have to make to the amount of clearing we did on the overall, in the overall area.
Yeah.
But, you know, so even, even if it is determined that.
You're very actually broke anyway, so it's not.
Yeah, well, if you go there, it's like you're, for me to Gloria from Wilson Stream.
Right.
And it's just kind of a depression that comes back in. Obviously it's going to flood in the spring.
Yeah.
And I don't know how exactly they make that determination, but with all things on this project, I've talked to Mainland and I said, err on the side of assuming we're going to need to take the most conservative step. For instance, there's a drainage ditch that was obviously made, man-made, and we called it a stream because we wanted to just say to the DEP, hey, we want to treat this, you know, the most conservative way, even though it really is, it doesn't appear to be a stream, but we're treating it as it is to make sure that the water is protected down there.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith? I take it that the amount of cubic yards of dirt, I'll say that you're going to, you say you're going to be filling, that this is going to be on a slab, the building, you're not, you're not going to have a basement underneath it?
That's correct. Yeah.
That's why I took it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan? I haven't figured out something about you.
No, I thought, I thought the players all looked good.
Craig and I were having our own meeting in the parking lot over there.
Yeah, no, I was, I was good with everything.
Okay, so, I'll make the motion because, all right, do we have any comments from the audience, first of all? Are there any abudders? There being none? Make a motion that we accept this plan, it's an application for site plan review, flood hazard application, soil erosion, stormwater management application.
Seconded.
We have a second from Judith? Any further discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Okay, you're good to go, Daryl.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, at this point, we're going to take.
We don't have to take a break.
Well, maybe. And we were expecting more people, we're going to take a break, but. So I also have to make this comment to the board members, if anyone feels they cannot review the CMP applications without being biased or have conflict of interest in the project, please excuse yourself or abstain from voting. So that being said, the next item on the budget, uh, not budget, but agenda is a CMP Net Transmission LLC CMP property right-of-ways to construct the New England Clean Energy Connect So I would ask the representatives of CMP, and also I would ask the board to allow them to finish their presentation so that they're not interrupted along the way, and if you have questions, please jot them down and we will, everybody will have plenty of time to ask questions. Just a second. Steve, when do you want me to read that letter?
I would say after the present, initial presentation and have that be of the first public input.
Okay. All right. So I will again make the motion that we accept the application as complete. We have a second from Mr. Smith. All those in favor? You abst, you, all those on a negative?
No, I'm going to need permission.
Okay. All right, now you're up.
I'm John Titus. I work for Bernson McDonald Engineering and we're responsible for providing permitting services.
They're going to have to get closer to the mic, I'm sorry, but.
We're responsible for providing environmental and municipal permitting services.
I'm Adam DeRozier. I'm a Central Main Power employee. I'm the manager on the NECC project.
Okay.
We've also got some other folks here tonight that we want them to introduce themselves at this time or when they come forward.
When they come forward, it's fine.
Okay, great. So I guess the first thing to, to let you folks know is that two weeks ago, we had provided you with the application that you have in front of you. We had stated at that time that this was a, that this was a, the application was actually a co-applicant, Central Main Power and NECC Transmission LLC. So we were filing it as, as co-applicants, but as of today, or actually last week, it's only going to be NECC Transmission LLC as the applicant from this moment forward. The, I think we had mentioned to you that there was an expectation that the project area would transfer solely to them at some point, and that did happen last week. So CMP entirely drops off from this application. So we are here tonight seeking permit approvals for the New England Clean Energy Connect Project component in Farmington, and as it is required under the town's shoreland zoning, floodplain management, site review, zoning, and soil erosion control and stormwater runoff management audiences. Just a little bit of background, the NECC is actually a, proposes to construct a new high-voltage direct current transmission line and related facilities capable of delivering up to 1,200 megawatts of generation from the Canadian border to the ISO New England Electric Connection Point in Lewiston, Maine. The project component in Farmington involves the installation of that new transmission line for approximately seven miles, 7.15 miles. It'll take place in existing CMP-owned right-of-way. And although CMP does own the right-of-way, NECC LLC will hold an easement, or holds an easement now for, I believe it's 150 feet of that corridor in order to build the project. So it will involve the installation of 39 new poles. Thirty-six of those will be single poles and three of them will be double poles that'll be installed with guy wires. They're all going to be direct embedded in the ground, meaning there will be no concrete foundations necessary. They will be an average height of, we've got it actually at 98 feet, but 100 feet for all intents and purposes. And in order to construct the new line, 75 feet of tree and vegetation removal will have to take place within the corridor to accommodate the new project. The good news around that is that 100 feet of the current right-of-way on the west side will remain intact. There will be no project activity in that area, and of course, that'll be a nice buffer for the landowners on the west side. So the existing transmission line corridor, I'm sure you folks are familiar with it, it runs from New Sharon, right at the Hardy, Hardy Lane, right on Hardy Lane, and then continues southward across Farmington Falls Road, the Sandy River, and then eventually to the town of Wilton just south of Webster Road. I would note that there's several public roads or a number of public roads along the seven-mile route, and they will become primary points of access for construction. We expect tree removal to begin April of 2021 and the entire project to be finished by March 2022. And that in a nutshell is the project in Farmington. If you look at your natural resource maps in Exhibit Four, it'll give you some good detail regarding the location of the project, the natural resources that are there, and also it shows you where the shoreland zones and the map flood zone areas are. And with that, I think we're ready to take any questions that you have unless members of the team have more to add.
Okay, before we take the questions, I want to read this letter that was sent to Steve or planning board. It's from one of the abudders, it says, "My name is Arlene Masale and I am the owner of 60-acre parcel of property, abutting the property right-of-way on which Central Main Power Transportation proposes the project. I recognize a planning board must maintain an objective criteria when reviewing the applications submitted by CMP. However, the planning board also has a responsibility to safeguard the future growth of our community through a balance between commercial, industrial, and residential uses. Given the enormous impact this project would have on the woods, waters, and recreational economy of western Maine, Maine is deserved to have a say. In the Town of Farmington's Comprehensive Plan, the vision statement clearly states it is our vision over the next several decades that Farmington will continue to preserve its unique rural character. The town will continue to analyze its management and protection of land and water resources, as well as one of the town's goals is to maintain and protect its natural beauty through conservation of its woodlands, farmlands, river, and streams. It is clear that the next project goes against the very grain of these statements. In the Town of Farmington's Public Participation Summary, all interested citizens were welcome to participate in discussion as to the future of our town, given that in excess of 65 percent of the population oppose the project, public input should be considered. As you know, lawsuits have been filed challenging the project. CMP continues to rush the construction despite this before appropriate federal review has been completed and all lawsuits challenging this project are fully heard and decided. The planning board has an obligation to the citizens of Franklin County to suspend, postpone, or hold these. or hold these applications until such time as these are completed. In closing, in closing, I am asking the planning board to stay on any decision this time. The majority of Franklin County citizens are in agreement. Please safeguard the future of our community and protect our natural beauty, as our responsibility and representatives of our citizens in our town. That being said, Steve, let's see, we're here to apply our ordinances in a comprehensive plan, which we don't have anything to do with, we have to go by what the ordinances specifically state. So that's what we're going to be addressing here tonight, if there's anything in, I guess violation, would be a good word. So that's what we're here to address. And Steve, did you want to say something about the gentleman that called, he sent the email to, the other abatta?
Uh, let's see. Okay, yes, I, I had a property owner from Massachusetts that had some questions about the basics of the project. I essentially gave him the information that you received in a memo, in terms of just the, the facts of, of the project. I also sent him a copy of the PDFs that, of, of the whole, the particular section that pertained to his property, I sent him, which shows really everything. It's a Google Maps view with, with all of the constraints shown and whatnot, so, and he did not get back to me. He, he asked questions, I answered them, I've dealt with him before, he's, he's just a conscientious property owner, and I think he was satisfied with the answers, in, in just the specifics about the project.
And I forwarded, excuse me, I forwarded it to Joan, and he agreed with Steve's answers and said, "Perfect," that's how he would have answered the questions as well.
Okay. On a procedural issue, Mike, I didn't ignore you the last time around to ask questions, because Mr. Jordan had showed up, so you won't be able to vote in the final vote, but you can still participate in question answering.
Yep.
Right? I just don't want you to feel slighted, that I didn't forget you. Thank you. Okay, so, who wants to start? Mike, do you want to start off?
I don't have any questions to answer.
Okay, I'll come, just remind me, I'll come back to you if you get questions. Judith?
Well, I recognize that we can't deny a permit if all the town requirements have been met. That's correct, right?
I didn't hear everything, whoa.
I said, "It's my understanding that you can't deny a permit if all of the ordinances and whatever our needs are as a town have been met."
That's true.
Okay. But having said that, I wonder if they could answer any questions for me regarding some benefits that were mentioned in Exhibit 2. And it spoke to benefits to Franklin County, but I wondered if there are any specific benefits that are coming to Farmington. Probably pages 90 through 95 in Exhibit 2, I believe.
Yeah, I can't speak to any direct benefits to Farmington. Most of the benefits that were laid out were county-specific in regards to the colleges, and then also the, the county payouts that were determined through the stipulation.
And even the county-specific ones, can you mention any?
I know there was, it says, yeah, the direct benefit was, will be total of $6 million, 3.3 million of direct benefit to the University of Maine and the residents of Franklin and some of its counties. I'm not part of the committee that determines how that money gets spent, I think there is committees established for that, but I, I can't speak directly to you. We could get back to you with, with a response.
But it sounds if some of them were going to the university, it would directly impact our main.
I agree, yes, yeah, yeah.
Alright, thank you. I was curious about that, because I know Franklin County encompasses a big area, and I was hoping that, you know, we would see some specific things for our town.
Yep.
If you have any, you could maybe convey them to see where the chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I interject with another follow-up question? Somewhere in here, it mentions something about broadband improvements, and I, but I didn't really see any other information that that would be installed in this right-of-way. This is purely power, not any commensurate, other facilities for, for telecom or anything like that.
So, this line includes 272 fiber, we call it OPGW, it's the, the aerial static wires that are for, essentially for lightning protection. Those will include fiber as part of them, and we have began making that fiber available for broadband expansion throughout the area that this line goes through. Yeah, like, and we have identified strategic locations where we will install these, we call them splice cans, they look like a, like a hula hoop mounted on the side of the pole. That's where service providers will be able to splice into and then distribute it along the, the sides of the road on the, on the distribution poles.
President, go ahead.
Thank you.
I'd also like to ask you where you stand in regards to all of your existing permits, statewide, you know?
Yeah, so we currently have the MDEP approval, we have the LUPC approval, we have the Army Corps of Engineer approval, we are anticipating the DOE or the presidential permit in the next week or so. And that is really our last major permit required to start construction in the LUPC territories.
Does that include the border crossing permit?
The border crossing is part of the presidential permit.
Which is also maybe Department of Energy?
Exactly, the Department of Energy is, supports the, the presidential permit.
Okay, and that's forthcoming, you think?
Correct.
Okay.
And then as far as municipalities, we have 15 affected municipalities as part of the transmission, the DC Transmission Line, and we have, I believe, two or three approvals from the municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
Of the 15. And yes, we, as Lisa mentioned, we have the Maine PUC approval also. The project requires a CPCN, which is issued by the PUC.
Yes, I saw that, yes, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Judith. Mr. Wright?
Once again, very, very impressive plan, just very detailed. So, just one more time, you, you own 100% of the property through Farmington, no, no eminent domain?
No eminent domain will take part on this project. Yep.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Ms. McGraw?
First of all, this book scared me to death. I really sat down, look, I even got my little color code in there, because I really tried to read it. It was scary. Impressive, but scary. At one spot, and I just was looking at the confider, there was talk about the health hazards question, and that there had been studies done, but it didn't sound like there was an answer to that. Are there some health issues that we really should be thinking about or hearing about?
You want to take that, do you want me to?
I think it was really near the back.
So as part of our, our state federal, and, and then the, the PUC, we did do a, what's the name of the study?
EMF.
EMF study for the line, and based on the ownership, they, they look at what the effects are at the property line, and there was determined to be no, no health effects at the property line for the project.
But wasn't there some mention of Magno something, something?
No, not that.
I know that doesn't count much, but I really did read it, didn't I? There was some mention of, of some studies that had been done, and I just didn't think it sounded like there were.
I don't remember if you see what the EMF study is.
Yeah.
The DCLI.
Yeah.
I mean, so basically, you don't have to find it in the...
It's like, page 276, I think it is.
Exhibit 2? Yeah, so on, as Lisa mentioned, in sec, in Exhibit 2, page 47, does give a summary of the findings from that report. And basically, just looking at this quickly, it says that Administration Guidelines for Static Magnetic Field Exposure Exponent also concluded that the calculated ion densities for the project are within the range of levels encountered in the natural environment, and that the new AC lines associated with NECC's associated network upgrades will produce EMF levels that were well below the assessment criteria established by this, this committee.
And I guess that's the sentence I was reading, that it's certainly more scientific than my brain thinks, but, that if they're saying there's no health concerns as compared to the natural environment, is this giving off any kind of health concerns, even if it's minor levels? I mean, was that really saying, "Don't worry, there's nothing, you could live underneath it if you wanted to?" Is that what it's really saying?
I believe that it's saying, I mean, I think every transmission line gives off some level of, of EMF, it's saying that the, the levels given by this line are well below the, the established criteria for concern at that point.
And then, would you repeat for me, you just said that of the local permits, you have only three so far out of the 15, is that what you said?
Correct.
So towns just like Farmington have voted no, or they just haven't voted yet?
They have not voted yet. I think we've submitted 10 applications?
A dozen, very recently.
It will be 10.
And we only have two approvals so far.
Okay, two.
But that's because those are the only hearings we have. No, no town, no planning orders from the county.
Right, so this has been, we've been working this through for quite a while, and we had to pause for a time, so there were a number of months that went by where there was really no activity, and of course, COVID came into the mix, and everything kind of came to a standstill, well, well now, it's all coming due at once. So we'll be very busy this winter with all of our towns in terms of getting our permits, so.
Okay, and my last question, if this, and I'm not sure I'm even using the right term, lawsuit, court action, what is it we're still waiting for?
I can speak to that, there, there are a number of appeals are forward, I can hear you, but I don't know if there are...
We, we have to have everyone speak at the mic because of Mount Blue TV, they're connected through the lines, and just please make sure that you state your name for them and for our record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, my name's Lisa Gilbraith, I represent CMP, I'm an attorney with Pierce Atwood. There are a number of appeals of the, of project permits going on right now. There is an appeal of the DEP permit before the Board of Environmental Protection, that's going on right now. There also is an appeal of the Army Corps permit in federal court.
And so are we, as local town, waiting to hear the results of the test?
No, none of, none of the appeals stay any permits, so none of, none of the, none of the appeals have caused the, the project to be put on hold, basically. So municipal permitting can continue, federal permitting can continue, all project activities can continue while the appeals are going on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I got.
Mr. Ottley?
Just to continue on that, what are, what are the appeals that are, I mean, what is it that they're appealing and...
Okay, so of the DEP permit that's being appealed to the Board of, of, the Board of Environmental Protection, so the DEP permit being appealed to the BEP, there are three appellantents, so it's, it's NRCM, Natural Resources Council of Maine, a group of petitioners called the West Forks Petitioners, so it's a group of people from the Segment 1 area, in the West Forks area, and then Nextera, which is a competitor utility to CMP. They are appealing the DEP permit on a number of grounds. I can go through those, but largely challenging the department's authority to issue the permit in the first instance, and then challenging some of the findings in the DEP permit, and then the Army Corps permit is being appealed in federal court by, also by NRCM, Sierra Club, and Appalachian Mountain Club, those are the plaintiffs, on, also on a number of grounds, largely that the Army Corps' environmental assessment of the project wasn't sufficiently comprehensive, that's one of their allegations, that's their main allegation, and then also challenging a number of the findings within that permit.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
My next question, or my real concern with this thing is the height of these towers. You know, I was shocked when I saw this cross-section, and these things are over twice as tall as the towers that are on that right-of-way now, and it just seems awful high to me, and they're really gonna stand out.
What, it's in there, what are they, 100 feet, the height?
Yeah, I think on average, it would 98 was the average height in, in the town of Farmington.
Right, but I, I mean, no one hasn't drove by the existing towers and tower lines they're going through there now, and those are only, what, 45 feet? And they stick out a bit.
The existing lines could be anywhere from 45 to 60, 60 feet, depending on the structure type that's out there today.
Say that again?
Anywhere's from 45 to 60, 65 feet, depending on the structure type that's out there today.
Okay. Again, this new towers holding this new line is gonna be twice as tall as that. It just seems very intrusive to me.
Yeah, and for, for this voltage of line, there's, there's industry standards that need to be met for phase-to-ground clearances, and so you have to assume traffic underneath the phases when you calculate that structure height, that's what drives the height of the structure.
Okay. I read in your, what's it, Exhibit 4, I guess, something you mentioned that we have, I guess, in our ordinance about accessory towers or something.
Yep.
Is there anything to that? And we...
That ordinance doesn't apply to, to this type of installation.
Okay. Well, I guess that's...
Okay. Mr. Smith?
I see, I see you're gonna have 39 self-wethering steel towers, 36 of them will be self-supporting, and three will be guide. I, I believe it's, you're gonna have one of those in the, the floodplain, just below the substation?
Jason, the Sandy River floodplain down there? Correct, yep.
Yeah. Is that one of the ones that, that's gonna be guide down in the floodplain?
The, the guide structure's not in the floodplain there. No, it's a, it's a single steel pole that is, a single monopole that is in the floodplain.
Right, but it, but it's not one of the ones that's gonna be guide, though?
No.
How deep is the footing for those poles?
So these are direct embed structures, and it's, the, the embedment depth is calculated based on the soil quality and then the height of the poles, so they're anywhere's from 15 to 20 feet embedment, depending on the depth of rock.
Okay. And this, I don't know how, how far this is, but, down manager, it...
Okay. And this, I don't know how important this is, but town manager, in his letter of review, suggested that if you don't have a use for them, and that's my part, that the wood chips generated out of that, if you're not going to use them, be donated to University of Maine for their boiler, for their biomass boiler. And I'm just curious, because I'm assuming probably most of the cutting will be done in the summertime.
It's actually quite opposite, because there's a restriction on any cutting in the months of June and July, so we'll be doing cutting around.
I'm sorry.
What was that?
I couldn't.
Oh, there's a restriction as part of our MDEP permit for the long-eared bat, so we can't clear any trees in the months of June and July, but we'll be clearing all the other months of the year.
Okay, all right, yep.
Yep.
Yep, that's all I got. Mr. Jordan?
But you did mention about donating the chips to the University of Maine for their biomass boiler?
I still didn't hear. I'm sorry. Has any thought been given to that?
I didn't know that was a possibility, but that's something we can definitely take back and look at.
It was a recommendation from a town manager.
Okay, no, that's the first I'd heard of that, but that's, we can definitely take that back.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Jordan?
Well, I really don't have a lot of questions. One of the things I would ask is, are the fields created by the electricity passing through these wires, through these cables, that has, does that have any effect at all on the fiber optic, you know, like what you're saying, you know, on your internet, that you're going to carry, that you propose to carry on these lines also?
It does not. I mean, many of the transmission lines that exist in the state today include fiber optic at the top as one of the static wires. This isn't something we're just doing on this line. Many of the transmission lines out there today already have this.
But this is direct current versus the old main current that we currently have?
Correct, yeah.
That was one of my questions. I get, I really, I guess I probably should have thought more about it, given how much we're doing tonight. But, you know, I mean, these lines, are they going to be, are these going to be fenced, or are people going to be able to use, still use the right-of-way like some of the others?
People will still be able to use the right-of-way as they do today. We're actually currently working with the state of Maine on leasing a trail in the new expanded right-of-way.
Thank you.
I want everyone to have a chance. Linda, do you have any questions? Mike?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Existing towers that we have now, how many do we have in the town of Farmington right now? I'm trying to just get an idea. It seems that these followings need to be less, a little kind of, you know, impact right now.
Yeah, I mean, height is definitely, does affect the quantity of structures. If you shorten them, you need to put them closer together to help with the sag of the wires.
Do you know how many we have on the existing line now?
So if we have approximately seven miles of right-of-way, the 115 lines, I believe, the spans are around three hundred feet. So I would guess we're on the order of around a hundred structures today, if I had to guess. Yep.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, about three times, yep.
So there won't be as many towers as we have?
Correct. I mean, the span lengths on this line is anywhere's from nine hundred to a thousand feet, whereas opposed to the existing lines that are there is around three hundred feet.
Okay. And the broadband is totally, I mean, Charlotte Communications of my internet, how does this help, you know, my internet? They have to tap into it?
So they will work out what's called a service provider agreement with the fiber that will be on the line, and they'll be able to use the fiber currently that will be installed on the line to move their service, either at a higher speed or to a different location that doesn't currently have it.
Yes. Judith?
Well, I just want to speak to the broadband thing, because in one of the exhibit two, where it talks about benefits, there's a broadband benefit, and it says that there'll be the creation of a 10 million broadband fund to be used to support high-speed broadband infrastructure in the host communities. So I'm thinking it's going to really help broadband.
It will tremendously, especially in some of these rural areas that don't have access to the fiber that will be installed on the line.
It's very much needed.
Absolutely, especially with the remote work from home and remote school life that we're all living in.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to the audience for comment, and we'll start off with abutters first. If we have an abutter, you need to come forward, state your name, and ask the questions. Would ask you please to stick to the issue.
Yes, my name's Mark Bailey. I live in Farmington. We have a dairy farm, and these posts, some of them are in our fields now. How far apart are the new posts going to be from the existing ones, as far as sideways, not lengthwise?
So the center line of the existing line will be seventy-five feet to the center line of the new line.
Okay. And how, and you're going to clear to the, completely, you're going to clear the right-of-way completely?
Essentially seventy-five feet from where the edge of clearing is today. It'll get expanded seventy-five feet.
Right, so, yep. And what was that?
We'll be leaving a hundred-foot buffer on the west side of the right-of-way all the way through town. So there's a hundred feet of the corridor right now of the right-of-way that will be untouched during the light of this drawing. So that clearing will be happening more towards the center of the existing right-of-way.
Okay, but your post, how much space do you need from the outside of your post to the woods?
The seventy-five feet that will be clearing. Essentially, we'll have another hundred feet beyond that that CMP still owns that won't be cleared.
Well, you go measure the posts that are by my farm, and you're talking, if you were looking from New Sharon to Farmington, the post will be on the right side, am I correct? Are you calling that the west side? Because it runs.
On the, it'll be on the Route Four side of the right-of-way.
Yeah, if you're saying New Sharon, look towards Farmington, it's on the right side.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah. And you go measure from the post that are there existing today, just to make sure I understood you. It's going to be seventy feet on the west side will be where a post would stand, a new one. Correct?
I was going to say, the new posts are approximately where the tree line is now.
Okay, and then you're going to have to clear seventy-five more feet?
Correct.
And that's basically the entire right-of-way. So there will not be, there will not be a seventy-foot necessarily buffer anywhere in places, because I know where it is on my property, and you're going to take all the trees that are there. So I'm just curious, because I want to know what I'm preparing for. And one of the things, the question on the health issue, I do know that I've read in articles that in agriculture, it affects the pregnancy rate of animals, and I'm not particularly this line, but high-voltage lines, that's known fact. And I know that there've been, just for safety of people here who hunt, people have parked vehicles under high-voltage lines and gone hunting and come back and grab the door, and it's electrocuted them. So that's one of the reasons they put them higher. I know part of it is probably because your span, but it's also for the static electricity. You go out and stand under the power line right now on the correct weather, and you can hear the insulators crackle. That's not because I'm against this or for it, it's just a fact. You can hear it, and you get static electricity. So when you ask about health issues, there are things that happen. And like I said, I'm not for it or against it, I'm just curious what's going on that's going to affect us. Now, are you going to clear, because you said you can't do it in June and July, if I remember right?
Correct.
And you're going to go on land and cut wood in April and May, or March?
Yeah, and I mean, as everyone knows, in May, in April and May, it's extremely difficult to do any construction, so it's going to be season and condition dependent.
Okay, well, I'm just, you know.
Yeah.
I, yeah, you know, if you guys own the land, doesn't matter, but I have fields there.
Yeah, I mean, posted roads and all of the typical spring thaw things that you have to deal with. It'll be depending on the type of winter we had and how deep the frost is and how dry it is or how wet it is, and, yep.
And you said you were planning on starting in April and finishing in February?
March 2022, yep.
Okay, all right. So, just curious, thank you.
Do we have any other abutters? Okay, I'll close that off. So we'll go back to the board here. Do we have any other comments or any more questions anybody would like to ask?
I got a quick question.
All right, Mr. Ottley?
So do you have all of your permits that you need to do, go ahead and do this whole thing?
In the, once we have the presidential permit in the.
Well, I'm just, I'm reading in our town manager, he just said he wants to make sure that we obtain all required permits before any construction's started. And have you gotten all of the permits you need before you start construction?
Once we have the presidential permit, we will have all the permits we need to start construction in the LUPC territories. And as we have the municipal permits, that's the last approval we need in each municipality to start.
Sorry, sorry.
Steve, that's up to you to check before they can officially start, right? If we approve it here tonight.
Well, they've stated that they're waiting, the presidential permit, which is to, because it's international between Canada and Maine. We know they don't have that, and Lisa addressed the status of the appeals. So, but I guess a question might linger that you real, as long as some, a landowner in Farmington is clearing wood in compliance with state law and local ordinances, they can do that.
Right.
I guess that would, you know, so.
Okay. Gloria?
I assume I know the answer to this. This project is not connected in any way to the 500-acre solar project, correct?
No.
It's just sheer coincidence that we're getting them both?
Correct.
All going to Massachusetts?
Going into the New England grid, Massachusetts is buying the energy from New England grid.
Nextera is actually trying to sue them. So, sorry. Nextera, they have their, have a lawsuit against you guys, right?
Yeah, Nextera also owns gas and oil-fired generators in New England.
Yeah, so they're, they don't want them because you guys are creating more power for, and going to lower prices, so that makes it harder for them, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Does that help?
Okay, oh, Mr. Jordan?
I thought that we ran into a situation where we, we can't necessarily make, give approval, conditional approval on a condition, like where they, where they don't have that presidential approval, so to speak, yet, that the planning board is not supposed to give approval tonight based on them getting. I was under that impression on something that we did, one of the, one of the classes that we went to in that respect.
I would wholeheartedly agree with that, Craig, Mr. Jordan, but what they're applying here for tonight for shoreline zoning and as such, they're not required to have, tell me if I'm wrong, Steve, they're not required to have those permits, are they?
Well, it's the exact same situation we have with big projects that go before DEP. We've approved those with the understanding that they cannot start till they have all their approvals, including that DEP approval. I don't see the difference whether it's Army Corps of Engineers, the PUC, the LURC, which have all granted approval. They've admitted that they're waiting for that presidential permit, which is forthcoming imminently. So I don't see a problem. I don't know of any situation where we can't give an approval based on the fact that the understanding is they will not start unless they get all their other approvals.
Okay.
Did we do that with the solar thing?
I think.
I thought we waited until they had everything.
I don't believe so, no. We had to wait for, well, before they could actually start, they had to have some other permits come in, like the archaeology, and they had some other ones. We did go ahead and approve it conditionally.
I'm happy to speak on this if the board would like.
Speak up.
So the Maine Municipal Association, their guidance, their booklet for local planning boards has spoken on this issue, and they've said that you can condition your planning board approvals on the applicant getting the other required approvals for construction in your town. You can't, some, you can't have, you can't have a provision in your ordinance that says that no approval can come from the town unless you get everything else first, because then you get caught in a kind of catch-22 situation. So the Maine Municipal Association has said that you can condition your approval on the applicant getting other required approvals to construct in your town. So that said, CMP has, or NECC LLC has all of the approvals to construct in Farmington, other than Farmington. So that's, that's what we need left in Farmington. We have the DEP approval and the core approval. We are still waiting on the presidential permit. That covers the border crossings, the border crossings, but that's not in Farmington. But conditions are allowed.
Answer your questions, the president, or you might go. I don't know if I can read this without my glasses or not. Glasses keep fogging up all the time. Do we have anybody, one last shot. Do we have anybody else in the audience, abutters, whatever, that has any input in this? There being none, I'll make the motion that we approve for acceptance with the condition that they not go forward until they obtain all applicable permits. Does that sound all right, Kate? Okay. Four, shoreline zoning, floodplain management, site review, zoning, and soil erosion control and storm water runoff management ordinances.
I'll second it.
I have a second by Lloyd. Is there any further discussion? Gloria?
I guess I don't like that we're wording it as a negative response. Aren't we really saying we're approving it conditioning, conditionally, on the condition that they do get the presidential?
I didn't make it specific. I said the condition that they obtain all appropriate permits.
Right, but I thought you said, and maybe we just need to reword. I thought you said that they cannot proceed until.
Yes, I did say that.
All right. I'm thinking about what our vote needs to say. It seems like it ought to be, if we, if we mean this, it ought to be in the positive, saying we approve their plans.
Provided.
Provided that they get all permits, if you want to say all, just aside.
So Lloyd, can you back off on your second for a minute?
Yes, yes, I will.
All right. So reword it, that we approve these applications, and I'm not going to read them all off again, provided that they receive all applicable permits. All right, we have a second by Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in the furnace, so indicate. Two, three, four, five, six. It's unanimous. Thank you. And thank you for great, I didn't get into it, but I did actually read it. You guys did a great job. I try, as a chairman, I try to stay out of it.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Other business? Mr. Kaisler, we have any other business?
We have a couple of solar applications coming in for next month.
Okay.
And so. And, uh, so, we know of them. Uh, don't know of any other ones that, that'll be ready. Kate may have, I don't, is there anything besides those two solar? What was that?
Steve, I'm sorry, but I didn't hear that.
So, we've got a couple of applications coming in for next month. One's going to, one's going to be a solo, right?
Two.
Two solar projects.
For sure.
And I know you mentioned that where, vining is going to be one of them. Where's that going to be located, do you know?
On the top of that bluff that's, it's, it's just this side of, uh, Hanafords.
Oh, right behind the old blocks, that's?
Yeah, that they cleared, and it, so it won't be really visible. It's going to be up on top of that, but it'll be twenty acres.
Good.
Yep.
Anybody on the board have any comments or input?
He's going to get it together.
I think, I think we all did a good job tonight. Gloria, are we proud of ourselves tonight?
Yeah. Can I just respond to what Steve just said, though? I know we're not discussing that yet, but does our ordinance have any limits to how many solar farms we might be seeing or discussing, or? I, I'm feeling like this is becoming like the marijuana discussions, that, gosh, if we have more solar farms than we have grocery stores, or more marijuana places than we have, you know, restaurants, do we need to be talking about any kind of a limit before we have too many solar farms?
I think you'd find a lot of pushback by landowners because of what's been prepared in state law to, you know, accommodate the expansion in these. But somebody could go to the Board of Selectmen, ask for a warrant article, you know, and, and have it be put into our zoning ordinance that we only allow X number of solar installations, but I, I, in terms of landowner rights, and they would claim, hey, I'm in compliance with every other law, you know, why are you hamstringing me? I can actually make something off my land. So, I think that's a, that's, that would be quite a debate, but it's certainly an option.
I don't know. I, I guess you all know, we've had our discussions about the solar units, it's just the size. I mean, I had some folks out in my vehicle looking at property yesterday, and we were up by the high school, and they looked down and said, what's all that? Well, of course, I had to bite my tongue and be nice, but how many huge facilities like that do we want in town, or is it irrelevant what we want?
I don't think you're going to see another five-hundred-and-fifty-acre solar farm. I think what, what you're going to see and what the state's promoting are, are the twenty-acre solar farms. And, and they, and there are a lot of them are going to be hidden. There's, there's one out on Holly Farm that would, you wouldn't see at all.
Right.
You're not going to see the one really up on that plateau above Hanafords. So, I don't think, you know, you're thinking of the scope of five-hundred-and-fifty acres, which a lot of that you can't even see unless you drive around. What you see is very little of that, actually, believe it or not. It really extends incredibly out back, and it's not visible. So, I think in terms of the, you're talking about visual impact, really. It, what other bad impact could there be from solar unless it's just a visual aspect, if, if that? And these are going to be a lot smaller at twenty acres than five-hundred-and-fifty. So, I think, you know, that's the example we have right now, but I think a lot of these smaller ones are going to be tucked away and I, but that debate could always be had.
Mike, do you have?
Well, to, to this point, and speaking as, I have a six-acre farm doing, doing myself, which you weren't really seeing, and I live right across from the big farm. I mean, I live in Solar Valley now. The only difference is I don't get paid for that view, you know? But the size of the substation, I think, is really going to limit how many we can do anyway. It's kind of a farm that's all itself. There's only so many, so much space for solar. It's not a limit.
Right.
You know, the infrastructure can't support that many. And I think they're starting to not go forward with some, some of these plans because of that.
Right.
Maybe some of it just, we, we just can't have it just because of the strength of the grid.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, good point.
Sure. I'll entertain a motion.
Let's go home.
What? Oh.
I just got one thing. One thing I'd like, you, you think about on these solar farms is, when the sun is shining down on these fields, how much heat is generated? When the sun is shining down on these solar farms, how much heat is generated? Now, we talk about everything that we're trying to do so that, we try to create so that we're not having, you know, global warming, and then we're putting up these black panels all over the face of the earth. How, I mean, is, is that not going to create heat?
That's a good question. The next people that come in, we'll ask them how much it, how much it puts off.
I mean, it's, you, instead of six hundred acres of grass and trees and cows.
Right.
We've got six hundred acres of black surface. You know, I mean, if we paved that whole thing, it sure as heck would generate a little more heat.
Definitely.
And we're not a whole lot different. It's an elevated pavement.
It's a good point.
Just.
We'll bring it up next time we entertain this. Oh. No?
Oh, okay.
All right, I have a motion on the floor dismissed. Anybody, anybody want a second to that?
Second.
Say it. All those in favor? We'll go home, and thank you again.